Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to EB Cam for live recording and live streaming our meetings.
Sorry, Ross.
My fault.
We should have left them off. That's when I sound best.
Thanks, Ross. Thank you to EB Cam for recording and live streaming our meetings. First up, we have a report from Lilia.
Hello. It's a very busy time of year, I mean, all around. I'm sure everyone feels that, but today in the high school, some safety procedures were done. So that was, yeah, I'm glad that it was done. I think it was a little, everyone obviously wasn't expecting it and the teachers didn't know about it, but I think it was good for the students to see and feel that they're actually in place and being performed now. Also in the high school, a lot of sports going on. The girls and boys basketball team both opened their seasons with a win last week, so that was good. The girls play again tonight at 6:30, and it's here.
Playing West Bridgewater.
Yeah.
Our arrival.
Yes. I saw that today, Mr. Leonard posted. The cheerleading team, We Won State, so that was exciting. And I'm excited to go to the state house tomorrow.
Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you. It was very exciting to see the article come out today, so. Yeah, so we're going to the state house tomorrow. We're gonna leave bright and early in the morning. It'll be fun, so that's a very cool experience, so we're excited for that. Both ice hockey teams have opened their seasons and started to play, and track opened their seasons up yesterday. Down at the Mitchell School, they had a bullying assembly today from Mr. Peace, so that was always exciting. I remember that. He talked about just everyone loving everyone and, you know, treat everyone how you want to be treated, so that was very interesting. They continue to have their after-school activities and homework club and frozen junior practice, put on by the drama club, so it's very exciting. The NHS induction was last night, so I was there, and it was very nice to hear Mr. McKinnon talk. Did very well, and that went off good. I think that's all. Very busy, but exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you took a couple of my items, so that will go very. Very successful fall season for athletics and having our band out there. It's nice to see them, and you could hear the jazz band, I think, tonight warming up for their Christmas concerts. It's nice to, when everybody's, I love it when we're outside, but it is nice when we come inside and we're seeing the parents and community members come in from all communities to watch the kids and the athletics and then the band. Congratulations to our state-winning cheerleading team who's going to the state house tomorrow. We're very excited about that. Wish them the best of luck, and then they go on to nationals. What's the date on that, Lilia?
So we actually compete on the 16th and 17th of March.
Of March.
Yeah.
And we're all set to go.
Yes.
And where is that?
Florida.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah.
Is it at Disney World?
It's in Universal.
Oh.
Yeah.
Very nice. Christmas on the Common was a big success. I want to shout out to Doug Ortenzi, who is always that guy for the Christmas on the Common. He works tirelessly with the Kiwanis Club and gets them ready to go. Wish him the best of luck with his retirement, which is coming up in a few weeks. Budget meetings with the town crafting a sustainable, reliable budget for the district. We kicked off on December 5th, 2023. I did ask Mr. Seelig today if we could move the 1-9 meeting to 5 o'clock. He said that he didn't have a problem with that. We can move down. He just got back to me, and then he'll invite also Dan Pika and Carol Julius to that meeting as well.
So, okay, we'll talk about that after. Okay.
Yeah. Just a couple of items before I have Mrs. Byrne come on up for a second. The evaluation tools that we use, and it was always a point of conversation. I went to the MAS-C conference and the NEASS conference, and this company was there for superintendent's eval. Talked to a bunch of, many of my colleagues. They're starting to use the instrument. It helps upload your documentation and put it where you need it, so it's much, it's, it is much more organized. It's, I think it'll be easier to read. They're trying to help school committees understand the format and the organization of it, because ours is so cumbersome in all of the things that we do. So I wanted to let you know about that. I did speak to Lauren prior to this. It's $2,500. I would like to do it this year, moving forward with it, and then possibly using it on the rest of the administration team. But I wanted to try it out on me as a pilot this year. Once we get into it, then it's a, it's a nominal fee. It's like, mine's the big one at $2,500. I think that the next is like $350, $350, $350 if we get more. And it's just learning and PD. They'll also give us a free professional development for the school committee on your own time as well. You can do your own webinar with the woman who is our, going to be our liaison to the company. ClearGov, we heard a lot about, we hear a lot about our district improvement plan. We hear a lot about our transparency, that maybe we should do more on our website and get more transparent and show people a little bit more of our district improvement plan or strategic plan. We sat with ClearGov. We already have ClearGov as a company that we work with. If you look at our website now, you can see our financials up there, our building projects. ClearGov is sponsored by the Massachusetts School Business Administrators. They like this program. This program will help my principal, our principals sat with myself, Dr. Williams. I don't know, in September, we watched them come in and they, this will help us format our strategic plan as well. It'll also give a timeline of where 40% completed, where 60% completed, we've completed. How much we spent in that area, why we're, you know, how many teachers are involved in that area, whatever the area is. So that's something I would like to move forward. We are, right now, I spoke to Mr. McKinnon about this. Gordon went to a session down at the MAS-C on communications, because we hear a lot about this all the time. Dr. Williams is gonna sit with me tomorrow with John Guilfoyle, who is a communications expert throughout Massachusetts. I'm sure that he does more areas than that, but the town uses John Guilfoyle. He does a lot of their communications out, whether it's crisis communication or just letting people know what we do. I've talked to a lot of my colleagues. We see a lot of, John Guilfoyle does a lot of school districts in the Commonwealth. One of the good things about this is that he would help us with our building project at the central school, would help the building committee get out information so that people are with us as we move forward. It also helps us with just communicating in general. They have a lot of, it's an à la carte sort of menu. They have a lot of things that they do. One of the things that Dr. Williams and I will look at tomorrow and talk with them about is they also will take over your website, not take it over, but they will be the guru behind the website. We do not have anybody that is directly keeping that website moving at all times. It's hard to keep up with all the schools and all the things that are going on. The principals do a great job of uploading things, but we, ours could be a little bit more interactive. We've looked at other districts that have used companies, different companies that do websites. They're terrific, but they only do websites. John Guilfoyle does websites, he does communications, he does crisis. You saw Chris Coran.
Yes.
I spoke to Chris on the phone. He does not have the full buffet that John Guilfoyle does. What he is, is he really works on the communications if you're in a crisis. He was at Boston Public, he was at Boston Public Schools as their communications director for many years. We had a great conversation. He's worked with big, major city schools. You'll see his in there. I was thinking, after we got done, he said he'd be more than happy to sit down and give me a price list, because he doesn't have a price list like Guilfoyle. Very nice, very bright. One of the things I liked about him is he would come in and do professional development with our principals.
Is that Chris Horan?
Yeah, Chris Horan. He would do, he would do PD with our principals so that if there were an incident or information that we thought was sensitive in a crisis situation, help the principals craft these types of emails and parent conversation. Both companies do, but that's where he, his is in, is mostly in the crisis part of it and how to handle that and how we communicate that out. So these are just two, these are pretty much the two that are out there here. We have John, I spoke with him, and I said if anybody would like to speak with him, I said maybe Gordon would want to do something like that and bring it back as like a subcommittee to talk about communications. What I've been trying to do is meet with these guys first. I had, I asked Gina if she would meet with me on this tomorrow because of the building project, as she is the chair of the building committee, so we can get a sense of what we're doing. And we do talk a lot about this when it comes to crisis in the district or just getting information out. So we're meeting with them tomorrow at 12 o'clock. We thought, you know, I was gonna ask him, you know, if we want to use you for our website and we wanted to use you for the four informational newsletters from the district once a month, one from the school committee, one from the office of the superintendent, one from the schools, and maybe one from, you know, whatever, whatever we choose. What would that price be as we get closer to the building project? They also have drones that they'll come in, they can do the video. We have talked to EB Cam. You know, they said that they would help us, which I think is terrific. These, but they can come in and they'll do the video, they'll do the marketing of a building project. So we're meeting with them tomorrow. But we are on it so that we can get our, so that we can help people know what we're doing. A lot of time we do all the, that's what Chris was saying, he goes, a lot of school districts still are, and it's true. We are still in the mainframe of, the mindset of let people know when there's a crisis, let people know when there's something going on, let people know this. I think the, where Guilfoyle, John Guilfoyle's company's coming in is it's everything what's going on, but in a succinct way. So from the office of the superintendent and school committee, what's happening in the district goes out, so.
I think that's a good idea. I've seen Chris Horan speak quite a few times, but I like that Guilfoyle has more, more options for us.
And Chris is by himself.
Yeah.
And John has some people.
I sat through his Horan presentation at the conference, and obviously I didn't see anyone else, so I have nothing to compare it to. But what struck me when I thought it might be of interest to you and to the rest of us is that he used some examples of some schools and just helping convey to the public the correlation between our budget, our strategic plan, this is where we're spending our money, this is what it looks like. And it just really struck me like, oh, my gosh, of course, this makes perfect sense that you need, that's an expertise.
They do it in a succinct way.
Yes.
That helps people understand.
Right.
They've done it a lot. This is their job.
Right.
Big urban districts, or maybe even big suburban, just but in the big urbans, they have a communications director that is online with their principals on a daily basis of what's happening and what's coming out of, from the school committee or the office. So that the message that comes out from the district is one and it's fluid. And I know that John Guilfoyle works here. I remember the police chief Allen started with him when he was here, when Chief Allen was here, and he brought him down, and at that time, we didn't, we were like, no, we're not, we weren't ready for that. Didn't have the money, it was like Michael, first of second, you're so.
Speaking of money, do we have a line item for this type of thing in the budget? Okay.
I'm gonna just move around a little bit, just to keep it moving. Kate, I'll hold on for you just one second. Gina and I have met, Dr. Williams and I have met with three companies thus far about an equity audit. We met with a company last spring. We met with a company, two companies this fall. One, the Equity Process with Cynthia Weeks, Scott Walker was on there. And then yesterday, we met with Mass Insight. This comes with a price tag. However, I do think it is a valuable tool that could help and support our strengths and open up on our weaknesses and what we should do to make sure that we are full, inclusive, and we offer opportunity access across the board in our school district. The services that we heard were between $30,000 and $65,000 for one. The other was from $87,000 to $197,000.
For another.
On the other. Gina and I did speak in length yesterday about, you know, should we, should I ask you for a range? Should Scott come in and sit with Gina and I and talk about what we're looking for, then come back to the team? We have one more. I did call Tracy Benson, who is co-author of Unconscious Bias. He did get back to us. His company's extremely busy. I don't know if we could, if he would fit us in in the spring. He's very busy, but he is gonna call us back. He touched base with Michael, and we're trying to get a time that fits for everybody. So that would be the fourth company. Do we, do we set a range?
How much was his?
We didn't get there yet. I would think that it would, I'm looking between 40 and 70, $35,000 and $70,000. I think there's higher ends, I think there's some lower ends. We've talked with one of the companies about can we, what can we do in-house to save money? And who could we put in for that? I do have some ideas about that. We did discuss that a little bit, but we are moving in that direction to look into the equity audit. I think it's valuable for the district. I think it's the way to go in the district. I think we need to look at it in the district. It's important to the faculty, the staff. It's important to me, it's important to Dr. Williams. We want to provide all opportunity access for every student. So, and I know that it is important to you because it's part of my goals. So Scott, maybe we could, once Tracy gets back to us, and then I'll tell you when that next meeting is, maybe sit down and decide, you know, how do we go about this?
Sure, great.
It's an added expense, but yet the invaluable lessons or the data that it will come back to us with and some information about who we really are and what is really going on could prove to be very useful as we move forward.
Is any of this, either the equity audit, these people that you're talking to, or the communications, is any of this subject to procurement law? I know none of us is a lawyer, but.
All of these, all of these companies were given to us by the Department of Education.
Okay.
So, and anything still under $50,000 after COVID, we were, you can engage with them. I did speak to John about them the other day. One of our things is, is again, we'll sit down, decide how much, you know, what is it, what we want? I mean, Mr. Walker could certainly come in and say, I think this is the company we should go with. I think we should do the whole thing and come back to the school committee and give his recommendation, and then you can say, yes, let's go in that direction. So, but I can get, I can always get more information on that. This was just this initial phase, we're, now people are coming in. I did speak to Renee Haywood. She had, she, as you, I don't know if you remember this, but she was the deputy superintendent of Brockton. She's the head of their equity and inclusion and diversity at Brockton Public Schools. Renee had interviewed a few of these other companies too. We talked about them, so I have some information. I'll talk to Scott about where Brockton was when they interviewed some of these companies, so.
Liz, when you say, the question about asking about in-house, do you mean a staff?
A staff member.
Like the way many districts do have a DEI coordinator on payroll?
Right. So I probably wouldn't put a DEI coordinator in place yet until after the audit, if that's what it says to do or that's what it compels us to do. We have the East Bridgewater Community Coalition. We met with them this evening. There are a few staff members that lead some of the work that we are doing with Kalise Warnham and the professional development. Would it be advantageous for us to have one of those leaders become a facilitator during the school year or during the six months that they do the audit and sort of be their liaison? So that that staff member is part of the audit, so they can see it, they can breathe it, they can bring it back to us, and they can bring it back to the faculty and staff. That, it's just some thoughts. I think we need to go through the process first and then decide what we need for the district. Some more for information this evening. And I want to congratulate Mrs. Sullivan on her retirement as a grade-three teacher. She has 25 years of dedicated service to the East Bridgewater Public Schools. She could not be here tonight. She's coming, so I'm gonna save, I'm gonna save a few words for her for the January meeting. She had another obligation tonight, so we're gonna push her to January, and she'll come in and meet the school committee. Pre-K tuition increase. I asked Mrs. Byrne to come this evening to just discuss why we talked about tuition increase. So, and talk about the different programs, because that is her forte. She knows the programs, she knows what we need to do, what we can do, and how we get it done. When we started talking about this the first time was probably before COVID, and we thought we would go up at COVID. Obviously, we went into COVID, we didn't have preschool, and that's one reason. We came back around in the 22, 23 was our last increase. We are, from our operational budget, putting approximately, well, $98,000 into preschool each year. Any little bit will help as we, as we move forward in the rough waters or what people are saying that will be the next rough couple of years, whether it's East Bridgewater or anyplace else in the Commonwealth or across the country. So we sat down and the central school had come and said, you know, I think we need to increase preschool tuition. Can you, can you look at this? We started to look at this. We looked at other school districts around us. We compared. We offer a full five-day, we offer a three-day full day, a two-day full day, a three-day half day, and a two-day half day. And so I went in and I said, let's increase it by $1,500, every program. That would have put us in the black if I had gone in that direction. I think, I think I talked to Gordon about it at MAS-C. I said, you know, if we did that, we'd sort of make money for one year, take a deep breath, and then go into the next year. And not just make money, but possibly help Mrs. Byrne get some more teacher assistance in there, maybe another, someone who could help with some services that we see more and more of every day. So we went through that, and Kate being Mrs. Byrne and a nice central school principal, and my voice of reason came and said, I think $1,500 across the board may be a little bit too much for the two-and-a-half-day and the three-and-a-half-day programs, Liz. Because if you, that's $1,500 for them and then $1,500 for the top. And I said, yeah, but that puts us in the black. And when you're going into budget season, I'd like to try to help and support everybody, and so it may, so the town, you know, we with the town can say, we are helping, we're supporting, we want to work and we want to do these things. Mrs. Byrne is right. So we went back to the drawing board and we said, okay, how can we come up with a better, more reasonable rate increase? I'd like to keep it here for three years. These are the rates that we came up with. I did have John run it out for two years. We can do the third year, and I'll have the third year for you. Went two years because we do have a building project. And if that building project were to come to fruition, then like Dr. Williams and I spoke today, there may be one of the programs we can't run for a year because we don't have the room. We may say we're gonna cut back on this program or move them to the, to another location or talk to another provider in East Bridgewater or someplace else to pick up our students for a year and then bring them back. So these things all come into place in conversation as we talk. Not many districts offer the five-day full. I love the five-day full. I think everybody loves the five-day full. I don't think anybody would say an ill word about our pre-K. I was there today. If they would have given, if Mrs. Campbell had given me a mat, I would have taken a nap too. I opened the door, I could hear Silent Night going, but I also could hear a little snoring going on. And everybody was relaxed. And, but at 172 days, it's 4360 a day. I think that's pretty reasonable for a five-day full-day program with a great teacher, Mrs. Goram.
And just if you break that down to an hourly rate, that's $7.27 an hour for care and education of a student. So if you think about other forms of even daycare for that type of rate, it would be impossible to find. And so as Liz had said, we had a lot of wonderful conversation about getting into a place where we felt was a better, more informed increase that really is sustainable, but also falls in line with all the programming. And so if you did a little bit of math, you might say, well, these aren't exactly all equal increases, and that is true, but they now get them all aligned. Because our five-day full-day program, when you really did the math, was even an exceptional bargain compared to the other programming previously. And so now it gets everybody in alignment. So the increase to the five-day full-day program going from $6,000 to $7,500, so that is a $1,500 increase, now gives you a full-day rate if you break that five-day program. So 7,500 divided by five is a $1,500 for a full-day program for the year. So now, if you do that math, it makes sense to say, okay, so three full days would be 4,500. Yep, the math works. So you have two full days, it's 3,000. Before, it didn't necessarily fall into place. And now same thing with your half-day. So your half-day is $750 a year for a half-day program, two half-days all year long, that's $1,500, and then three half-days is your $2250, which again, gives you that same formula. And so you're still looking for an hourly rate of $7.27 per student. And so what I can share with you, like Liz had mentioned, full-day programming isn't very common. It's becoming more common in other places, but not necessarily in our neck of the woods. So what we know is Lakeville currently has a five-day full-day program for $7,605 already today. When I look at part of the early childhood programming, that kind of brings us into different areas of Massachusetts, there are ranges from $7,650 for some that might have a four-and-a-half-day program all the way up to over $14,000 for a five-day full-day preschool program with tuitions. And granted, we're talking about places such as, let's see, let me give you a couple. I circled a couple. So that was Wayland, that's $14,460. Winchester is $9,900 for a five-day. Needham is $13,200. And so their hourly rates are $13, $14, $9. So when you really break it down, and granted, that's comparison shopping by program, not necessarily by region. I still think, even though it's a good-sized increase from where we were, it is necessary for us to be moving forward, looking at quality programming, staffing, the salaries, and everything else that kind of goes with inflation that we've been experiencing. Not that any of this money touches any of the consumables. That's all out of my operational expense items. This is strictly helping support salaries.
Excuse me, what are the hours, half-day, full-day?
Six hours is a full-day program.
And that's from when to when?
8:45 to 2:45.
And then the half-day?
You have an 8:45 to 11:45, excuse me, and then you have a 12:45 to 2:45.
Thank you.
Did I do that right? Anyway.
Sounds right.
Did I do that right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And when the conversation first started, and we've been talking about transportation for the last month, and we've heard a lot about this. When it first started, I said to Kate, you know, let's take, let's remove one of the programs. Let's do two full day, five day programs, and get rid of a half a day program, which we can't because it's mandated. Or get rid of a two day full day, or let's try something different with the half days. Thinking that maybe we could run our own bus, run our own vans. Because we're keeping a van driver employed on a half day all day, because we can't get them back. So that's, we were looking at all, all sort of ways, cost-saving methods to do it. There's really no other way than to do this, to have a cost increase. I'd like to keep it there for three years, so that we're not going up and down and see what happens. I also spoke with Mr. Shea about, you know, do we do a threshold? When, at the end of three years, if it, three, if it's, if we're getting close to, if everything's going well, and we still feel like we're doing okay, maybe our threshold is 80,000. When we, when the operational budget has to put in 80,000, do we go up then? Or do we just go for the three years and see how we do? That's up to you and us to have that conversation.
And a lot could change by then, too.
Yeah. I also think, you know, we also looked at our teachers and where they are on the grid, on the salary grid. What, they'll be moving up, that's why you see it moving. That was the other reason we only did two years, because we also have a contractual, contract coming up with our teachers in another year. So I mean, he can assume and put some numbers in, but we want to be pretty accurate with this. Mrs. Harvey?
Hey, Mrs. Jenkins.
Hey, Mrs. Jenkins, did this letter, did a nice job on the letter. I asked them to go out, if you can look at the letter for three years on the bottom. Kate has looked at the letter and okayed the letter. I wanted to put it in your packet. If you're okay with it, we'd like to.
Making sure I got the news first.
Good.
Yeah, and I will speak to one other thing in a minute.
So that's, that's where we are.
I, I know you're looking at numbers, which is the primary goal right now. I did want to share that there is going to be a shift in preschool registration. Years ago, preschool, just like our full day kindergarten before it was, man, before we had it in our operational budget, was a lottery system. And handful of years ago, we kind of did first, first come, first served, trying to fill the spots. And for many years, that served us really well. And I would say the last two years, it's kind of taken a different turn. And one that's a little surprising, almost like registering for preschool is like getting a Taylor Swift concert. And, and so while we're flattered that the community wants to be part of our programming, and likes our programming, and we're thrilled about that, to me, it's an equity issue, how quickly it fills up, and the way in which it's filling up. And so, there are many families that want to be part of our preschool. And so, the last two years, if you didn't come the very first day we opened up, and we had people waiting outside two hours before school even opened.
Right, it was like a Black Friday.
True. And that is not the type of stress or atmosphere I would like for our families to experience. So, looking to go back to more of our lottery system. So, basically, we'd still open up January 3rd to start receiving applications for people to be brought into our programming. And then at the end of January, we'll give everybody that month to get in their applications, let us know what programs they're interested in, and then we will do a lottery for all programming. At least that allows equity in the process. Anybody that wants to be part of that five full day has the same equal opportunity to be part of it as anybody else, as opposed to the person that could take the day off to be there at 6:00 AM in line. And so, just to give you a heads up, because I'm hoping that's a positive buzz in the community. But I also know that it worked well for some, and not for most.
Did you, used to do it by lottery years ago?
We did. Years ago, it used to be by lottery, both preschool and kindergarten. And then when we had the full day, Kay, and we were trying to, you know, we were growing our preschool programming at that point. And so when we surveyed members in town, families really wanted to have more of those full day options. So when we started really developing that programming, and then expanded into all these full day options, we started to say, well, kind of first come, first served, so we can kind of plan ahead on what that's going to look like and sound like. So it worked really well for several years. And it would take, by end of the summer, maybe we'd fill up all the programs. But then, like I said, the last two years, it took a different turn. It was super competitive, and people were there. And, yeah, I just, we're appreciative, but I don't think that's the type of environment we're trying, or climate we want in the, in the community.
And you deposit.
True, yep. And so, also, we've always asked people to submit a deposit upon request, as their part of their full completed application. And so, we're going to do away with that portion, and still break it down to 10 monthly payments, 10 equal payments. A lot of that has to do also with the bookkeeping, and how quickly we have to turn around that money. And then if you don't get your program, and then funding money, it just was getting a little sticky with QuickBooks and other systems. And then warrants would be coming to you about reimbursing people. And we can't, don't want to hold on people's checks, so we just figured we won't do that. Once they know that they're in, they will, all first payments will be due by August 1st.
How soon do you, would you estimate someone would know that they were secured a preschool spot?
Great. My vision is that we'll give them to the end of January to submit their applications. And obviously, we would always encourage people, if they still want, we might not fill up, fill up, you don't know. We always do have waiting lists, so people that are welcome to come and be part of. My thought is the week of February 5th. That's the first full week in February, that would be the week that I would do the lottery. People would receive an email notification, so they'd know what program they received, or if they did not get their one choice, and if they're on a waiting list. But everybody would be notified via email, so we have a nice written correspondence to keep track of.
Good. So then parents could, plenty of time for planning.
Correct. Because I do understand that if they can't get what they want, or it's not their first choice, they need time to pursue all their opportunities. Great question.
What is the constraint on capacity? Is it physical space? Is it teachers? All of the above?
And DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and NACI regulations as far as class size. So that is capped. So for integrated half day programs, we look to kind of maximize that model. So that's the program where students will come in and age in from early intervention services that may require special education needs, right, have an IEP. So the magic formula for us there is that we can have seven students on individual education plans, and eight models per half day session. So the half day classes max out at 15 students. Okay, so in a perfect system, we have eight models for every half day session. And in our two day model, for the three-year-olds, we need to leave spaces open, because students age in throughout the year. So we always need to, so to start the year, we'll be heavy on the models, because we need to leave that availability for students that potentially would join that program throughout the year. Years ago, I'm going back to several now, we did have to open up another session in order to meet the need of new students coming on. We tried to be really mindful, but obviously, there's no crystal ball. But we do get a couple of, maybe say, six months in advance, we get an idea of birthdays, and students aging, becoming three years of age, or 2.9 when we can kind of evaluate them. If for some reason, we needed to go over that ratio, there are waivers you can apply for, but we typically try not to do that. And then our model with early childhood and student, and teacher ratios with students, we can't go above 18 in our full day preschool programming, ratio of one to nine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know what the current prices are?
Yes, for our preschool programming?
Yeah, I didn't see them in this thing, unless I.
Sure, the current two day half day is 1,275. The three day half day is 1,913. The two day full day, 2,550.
So it's just this right here?
Yeah, it's the first line, 22.
So this next page is the increase.
I'm not sure what you have in front of you, so I apologize.
So I have this?
Yes.
And then I have this.
The column on the right.
And that one has updated rates. So I can tell you what the increase is. Do you have that in dollars?
Yeah, it's the column next to it.
Okay.
Have you looked at, like, kinder care and the Y, what they're charging for these kind of programs?
I have not looked at Busy Bear Kinder Care. We have looked at area preschools, public schools. And I have that long list of other public school preschool programming that goes throughout this Commonwealth, throughout the state.
I did. So I knew that if, when I was going to be asked to vote, like, about something that would affect families, I wanted to spend some time understanding. So I had looked into that. I mean, the rate that is provided here is peanuts compared to what anyone is paying.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so I can tell you.
My kids are a little bit past this age, but this is good prices.
This is cheaper than what I paid for daycare 10 years ago.
Yeah, so, so you could know, like, take my word or whatever, right? Like, looking into it, it is so much less expensive. And then I reached out for somebody, like, the operational costs, I go into those things. You could confidently know that this rate is much more affordable than anybody that would be choosing to go a private route.
So my question would be, given what we see here, are we willing to accept a three-year loss?
I think it is. I, I, that was my initial thought. I was like, oh, we're losing money. Why don't we close that gap? But.
And we're incredibly affordable.
It's, it's affordable. I mean, let's, let's not pretend that daycare is affordable, right? And also, a place, a private daycare, they're open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's a different, there is preschool there, but it's, it's a completely different environment.
May I say a couple of things? The increases now, with the exception of the five day full day, you're looking at 17.6% increase. 25% for the five day full day. Okay, that's what we're proposing. The other components of this are that by law, and Liz mentioned it, we are required to offer the integrated preschool model for students aging in, to come into public school. And so, there's lots of ways we can look at that. My lens looks at that saying, at least half of that programming, which is our integrated half day programming, should either be coming from our operational budget, because we're required to have it, and our thinking about special education. When you look at the salaries that are also there, there are also salaries for special education teachers and programming, where I'll just tell you, we don't have tuitioned students in. So at the same time, I want to, I cautiously say, I don't think we'd want to get into a place where we're putting all of our preschool programming on the backs of the tuitioned families. Because it's really not, that's not the purpose. Not to say that there might not be opportunity, depending on what you think about this increase, if, if there is a cycle to say, every three years, we're going to reevaluate, to see what you think is healthy in three years from now, or whatever you decide to do. I just don't think that if you put all of those preschool people in, if you really look at them and kind of sort them out, there's many ways that we could slice that. And all of them should not come out of our revolving account, because they're not all from tuitioned sources.
And Jay, to that, you and I spoke about this, about special needs.
Yeah, I mean, not only, we're mandated to do that, in a lot of regards. So we have to keep those pieces in place. But it's also the services that our kids need that we, that we're providing them. So if we're looking at just balancing out our revolving account, none of one does it, it was a bad spot legally, Rex was. But it, but it puts it into a situation that we may, are you going to look later on down the line? Are you going to cut services for a student who may need services because it doesn't, isn't financially feasible? And we can't do that. We just can't do that. That leads you back to the same equity piece that Ms. Byrne was talking about earlier.
The, the special education, one of the line items you use for is OTPT, right? That takes up pretty much all of that one line for one teacher, or in that one area of OTPT services. So, and we have some challenging students, and we want to keep them. They belong here with their families and their friends, peers.
Yeah, it's our, it's our job, it's our role. And so, it just doesn't all come out of the tuitioned families.
I put three years, because most of our, all of our contracts are three-year contracts. So it gives us an opportunity. It's up to you, I mean, you could say, let's do it on a one year, come back around. I just put three years out, so parents who have a three and a half year old, and just had it, and are having a new baby, they can say, okay. I've got one going in at 7,500, okay. In three years, we've got the next one going at 7,500.
Only if they win the lottery.
Huh?
Only if they win the lottery twice.
Right. But, and that's sort of how I was looking at it with parents, or, and I think Kate was too, with multiple children in the district.
I'm just thinking about the level of increase from this year to next. 17.6 is a decent, in my opinion, a decent size. 25% is already.
When was the last increase prior to that?
22.
In 2022, it was minimal.
25.
It was, it was low, it was low.
It was low.
I could go back. I did not bring all of that. It was minimal, it was a minimal.
I just think, it's one of those things, where the longer you pause increasing prices, the more you have to do it.
Yeah, the more, the bigger it is.
So I think this plan is good. And we do have the advantage, like Liz said, of being able to kind of lock in the teacher's salaries. At least we'll know what it's going to be. But I do think Peter might have a good point, is are we signing up to be negative in the latter half, or other circumstances? And should we look at that?
You could put a caveat on this, Scott, or the school committee could say, you know, under the discretion of the school committee, to look over yearly rates of the, of the pre-K tuition. So, as of right now, we're setting it, yes, we're setting it for three years. However, the school committee has the right to come back and look at it next January, or next December, and say, I think we need to go up another.
2%.
Yeah, if we could have the conversation in November, it would be fantastic. That way, we'll have all the paperwork translated and ready to go.
Yeah, I think that that makes me feel more comfortable, or like, the longer term budget, to know that it will be evaluated, but then also, like you said, the project, the building project, and what's going to happen with that. There's just so many variables. The cost, I think, is necessary, increase seems necessary, obviously, but, yeah, that locking into a certain timeframe.
We can put, you know, we can put that in, that the school committee has the right, reserves the right to increase.
Asterisks before.
Tuition, that's, that's asterisks.
To abbreviate later.
I don't think that we're ever going to, from what you just explained to us, I don't think we're, it's not going to be a profit maker center for us, because of our.
It shouldn't be.
Right, it's supposed to be. There's, my understanding from the explanations you guys gave us was that it's okay to be in the negative a little bit, from when you look at the tuitions versus the salaries, because there's so many other things that go on. So I, I appreciate the explanation.
And I will, you know, I think we're looking at the needs down there, down there at the preschool, looking at, you know, do we need an extra set of hands? Kate would tell you she would need 30 extra sets of hands on a daily basis. And we would love to do that. That could be an opportunity, and that's.
Well, the other factor here, you mentioned it, we have a contract situation coming up in another year or so. And that's a reality. So, who knows what could change.
And that's just the teacher's contract. This year, we have the instructional support assistance coming in.
Okay.
And we have a lot of instructional assistance right now in pre-K.
So I think with that caveat. I'm sorry?
Which makes the asterisk feel even better, knowing that none of us have ever.
I would just say that when you do the action item, the asterisks.
I would say the caveat would be, we have to reserve the right to review it based on some variables, so that's fine.
I come from the world of nonprofit, so if you're, the goal is to just be in the red less, so, right? So if being in the red less is the goal sometimes, that that just kind of makes sense, being in the black feels okay. But nonprofit world is, just don't lose $100 million this year. You know, so I understand what you're saying, the goal of that.
I would like to see a caveat included with regards there being a threshold for total, you know, like, if it gets to a certain point, then it needs to be reevaluated. So in other words, there needs to be a mechanism in place. It can't just be a review and of. It should be a what's, what are we willing to?
Right, I don't disagree. My only hesitation for the purposes of this discussion tonight is I don't think we're prepared to decide what that threshold should be right now.
I just think whether it's this, or transportation, or special education, or you pick, they're all microcosms of a very challenging budgetary.
So.
Well, an easy way to look at that is looking at enrollment as to what we would be legally responsible for providing if we did not have a tuition-based program. That would fall on the operational budget. So looking at this deficit, that looks like one and a half teachers. Could we run our program and fulfill our legal requirements with one and a half teachers? And if that's the case, then essentially, the operational budget should be able to support that.
Support that. It's a good way of looking at it.
I mean, it was great. We had years where we were able to completely offset preschool through the revolver, because we had such an increase in programming that was being offered. That levels off as the needs of students enter into the program, and we're required to have more staff, more supports in place for them. So fortunately, unfortunately, this would happen, and we kept saying, we can't lose sight of the fact that this is still an operational responsibility to some degree. If we can offset it, great, but we still have an obligation as a district to fund the program. So maybe looking at it from, you know, what would it be if we just had the legal responsibilities? What would that budget look like? What would that budget look like? And as long as we're staying below that budget, it's still considered a win.
Which this is.
Yes.
Substantially, yep.
I was going to say, if you just looked at that, we've got a good surplus.
Not to mention all the students that are getting the programming.
Yes.
And what would that number be for obligated?
So it would be the number of, of special needs students, and then, I mean, even if they need to have models.
Like the enrollment for that, do we know what that would be?
Do you know how many current IEPs you have in preschool?
I don't have that number for you tonight of what that would look like.
But that's also flexible, because that, that change, that changes based on what EI numbers are. So some years we'll get EI notifications, you know, you might get ten, ten or twelve at the beginning of a school year. But those also continue to roll in as the year goes on. As somebody turns two point nine, we then have that obligation. So it constantly rolls.
The other part to that, too, it's not, it's individualized. So there might be some students with significant need that require full-day preschool programming, additional therapies, and so they're, it doesn't always look the same. And so that's the other part of this, to say that, you know, we have a therapeutic preschool program that runs that has a variety of students that are in it for a variety of different lengths of period of time, who are then also integrated. So none of those students are tuition-paying students, but require that level of support from the district lens. So while I wish it was a perfect little, you know, predictable system, it really isn't. But so that's where I think as, you know, when we look to fund these, as Dr. Williams was also saying too, right between what should, could come from the revolving account, where we should think about maybe portions of salaries that come from operational, and what is truly, you know, special ed. But granted, you know, I have just central schools business. I don't have the whole big picture of where all of the other operational money and the special education budgeting and grant funding and all that stuff goes. Because I've got lovely spreadsheets that I've shared about possibilities of what that could look like and sound like. So that way, maybe it is more predictable once you have salary structure in place, because then it comes down to the teachers in those positions, and then you can predict that over time based on their salaries. But that's, if you're able to.
Easy math would be two, because we know we have three-year-olds, and we know we have four-year-olds, and we don't typically put three-year-olds and four-year-olds together.
Right, and half-day program, it's one teacher currently, that, just for half-days, but not full days.
Lilia, you don't want to be part of this.
So if you got.
We'll let you know how it pans out.
So if you said, we didn't need the five-day full day, or the two-day, three-day full day, which are two teachers and two ISAs, granted, we do have integrated students in those programs that have IEPs, but those are bonus programs that people pay tuition to come for full day.
And the last word on this, the more we can do for a child upfront.
The better off.
The better off the student is moving forward. And hopefully, we can help intervene in any area that they need, or even make them more apt to stay with us. And we build rooms when we know what, what we, what, what students need in three or two years from preschool, we build rooms. And if we can build a room, then they can stay with their peers, and they can stay in their own district. And for me, that's, that's really the crux of, of this. We'll never have enough money to run schools. It's just, it's just there, and it's not an easy, it's not an easy get.
So we have an action item on this that we might as well take now. Do we want to just take this as it is for now, with plans to kind of keep it on the books to review? Does anybody have any concerns with this three-year plan, given the whole discussion we've had tonight?
No.
The motion I would make is to prove it with the footnote, that school committee has to reserve the right to review the numbers.
I would add that line. Lauren, this.
So, so if we do this, can you?
Lauren, it has not gone out yet.
Add, right. So can you add a little note to this that says, you know, anticipated, I don't know.
Wait, the, the school committee reserve, the East Bridgewater School Committee reserves the right.
Because I would just worry with the contracts coming up, that it might get.
Review the.
You have no worries. So anticipated, so this chart, anticipated annual monthly tuition rates, and down underneath the red, also put an asterisk.
I got it, reserved, yep.
Yep, okay.
I think the only other thing I would say is, are we conditioning people to have a three-year rate locked in when we know things go up every single year? So I think maybe as we look at this three years from now, hopefully, we would say, every year, we're going to have an increase, so that way we avoid the big increase all at once.
You may want to do that, Peter, but not everybody. I, I can tell you this, we get a lot of calls right off the bat when we even accept people, even accept students, we get into hardship come June, come December and January. You know, a parent may call and say, I can't make this month. So when Pete, I mean, we may be in the red once in a while, but I have taken, we, as the superintendent of schools, I have said, yes, you're going to stay in the program, you're, you're going to be fine, you're going to make it. But I did, I put, East Bridgewater School Committee reserves the right to increase rates on a yearly basis. And then next year, you can come back with another caveat of the threshold would be, if you, I mean, if you wanted to put that in for yourselves.
To your point, if we find that every year, it's like a, a big meeting for us, where we have to do this and kind of start over again, and maybe we want to go to one years after that.
I'll make the motion that we prove this with the footnoted caveat to it, that we can review, we have to.
I think we have a comment to be made.
Sorry for the whispering down here.
Well, we're here, so I figured we shouldn't hear it at all.
The sidebar here was just, do you get rid of the chart and just put next year's and just say, if you're really concerned? Because it's, I don't want, we can't predict, but it sounds as if right now, that's your concern, is being committed for three years.
I think that, I think that's probably the best plan. Like, to your point, be fair to people, so that they don't say, I saw a three-year chart. What do you mean, it's changing?
Right. And, and if, if we didn't have contracts coming up, what if we just commit for two years?
We, well, you could say one, still put the, the bullet about school committee reserves the right to look at tuitions on an annual basis. And then next fall, we come back, and you see what the temperature is for you and for the community and contracts.
So moved.
You got that, Mike? So Gordon has made a motion.
On an annual basis.
Is, are, are we, is it, do we need to care in the motion about whether or not Kate puts the chart? What the chart looks like?
Oh, I was just going to say, have him read it. Probably have to read the motion and then add that line, so he can, so Mike can put it in there correctly.
He got it. He just said he got it.
You got it, Mike?
Yeah, I approve, so the candidate moved that the school committee increased the tuition increases with the caveat that the East Bridgewater School Committee reserves the right to increase tuition.
Yeah, so what the, what the grid showing or not is not something that needs to be voted on.
No, no.
That can be preference.
And then, won't be as confusing, or people saying, I saw three years, what do you mean?
Right, and we'll just.
Because I don't need it. I see the, I see, I'm a visual learner, they didn't see the words that happens to.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's a motion?
So that's a motion.
Second. Second.
Thank you, second.
All in favor?
All yours.
Is that your done?
Thank you. Thank you, Kate.
I feel like there was.
Thanks, Kate.
Oh, there is everything. Okay. Felt like there was more. Thank you, Mrs. Byrne.
You're very welcome.
Reports and discussions. So we have on here.
My mid-cycle.
Sorry?
My mid-cycle.
Yes. Mid-cycle review schedule change because we were supposed to have mid-cycle review at this meeting, is that? And obviously, that doesn't make any sense, because we just approved the goals at our previous meeting. So we need to discuss and decide when to reschedule that mid-cycle review to. Is it, and also, is it a mid-cycle review or a mid-year review? Well, so, mid, so we're supposed to do, didn't we just, didn't we decide it was going to be a two-year cycle? Yes. So then the mid-cycle review would be at the end, it would be. Like April-ish? Yeah. Okay. And I feel like that might have been in the timeline we voted on previously? Probably, hopefully. As a member of the evaluation subcommittee, can you look at that? Not for now, obviously, but just make sure that, so that we can, if it's on the timeline, we're good, because then it's there. Yeah, I'll go back and look. Okay. So it's on, so we will do the mid-cycle review in April, one of the April meetings. We have public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? There's a sign-in on the table, if you could, all set? Okay. And I believe we have two, two minutes? Is that what we've done previously?
You can come back to the microphone.
Is there a standing microphone anywhere? Are we using Lilia's?
Welcome.
Thanks. I'm here still. I've been here almost seven years with two of my kids, two boys, well, excellent. Well, not, not so excellent, but you know, we get to ask a couple of things. A little late, but what did we learn at our exit interview from the last principal? And then we pass it down to the new principal, and what kind of support are we sending our kids, you know, showing our kids? Especially the kids of color, you know, we just put it, put it out there, I think frustrated. Our kids are, no, don't say nothing, you know, don't do anything, you know, it's okay. But who represents our kids, okay? Ever since I've been here, where the faculty of color, where the staff of color? The last principal was a failure. He, he, he was looking for staff of color, minorities, to, to bring in. How supportive is the board? I know some of y'all are new, you know, and y'all, you know, some of the staff are white. But still, we have a gap. We, 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 we have biases, we have racism here in the school still. You know, after we went through that, you know, that black face, who's getting frustrated, you know? And you have to, you know, coddle my kids, you know, and, and my kids sitting outside, DJ sitting outside. You don't want to be, you know, you, no, 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 don't say anything. You know, when, when you get comments like, oh, this, this organized school, this ain't a Y M C A. That makes me frustrated. Standing out in pride. My oldest son, he's in high school, frustrated, great education in here, but still, he don't want to come back. That hurts. Some people, oh, yeah, you know, it's a great year, come, come on back. And I, I, you know, I tell them, go on back. And then I see other people, you know, whose students have left because of that same problem, biasism, you know? And they don't want to come back. They're leaving. It hurts me. You know, I was talking to a lawyer who's somewhere here, and they don't want to come back, and it hurts. What, what are we going to do to move on? What are we going to do to, to, to diversify this school, make it better? Because we have some real problems in here that we're just looking over. And I'm just going, you know, neither one of you says something, but I have to. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm just, just so you know, public comment isn't really a question and answer. But you are more than welcome to ask your questions, to the point of getting them out there and heard. And then, at some point, if appropriate, someone can reach out. You, did you?
Yes.
Okay, so we have your contact information and?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, one of my questions was on the topic of communications. I was just wondering, what was the method used to define communications company? And if you said it, I apologize, but I was just curious, what is the procedure to find communications company? If we have communications company that we are known about, our, the, all of our systems, how, how do I get that out to the community? The other concern, I would say, is, we spoke about the lottery for preschool, the lottery option, one, one option to now lottery. And I believe, I believe that's a good idea, but my only concern is how do we ensure diversity with having a lottery there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second action item is regarding the creation of a DEI subcommittee, which I think so far has been a one-man subcommittee of Scott Walker. We're bringing this back up today, because we did say that we would table it. I know a lot of us had some things to think about. The last time we brought this up, we said we'd table it and bring it back up in December. So we need to decide whether or not we're going to form a subcommittee, what role that subcommittee would fulfill, and then who, who would be on it. So, thoughts, concerns, questions?
What is the, I think the first question, well, you already asked it. The first one I'd be looking for understanding is what is the role that's filled? Collaborating with Liz, collaborating with the, hopefully, the DEI audit, right? Is it, is the, is the committee or Scott the one-man show? Like, you know, Liz referenced Scott, is, is it collaborating around choosing that DEI audit company? Is it around collaborating around making decisions broader? You know, I.
I think from my end, it's, it's having like almost a subcommittee that you sit and you talk about, you know, what we're hearing, what we know, what the data is saying to us, coming back to the school committee as the voice of, this is what I'm hearing from your administration and your staff, and we had a meeting, or we met with some companies, and this is what we came up with. And then, just like any other subcommittee, when a subcommittee does the work, and they come to you and they ask you for your support to move forward, then it would come forward.
I would offer to do it with Scott.
Yeah, I mean, just from being in the first conversation for the equity audit, you realize how necessary it is in the school.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not just if we're doing things wrong, it's what we don't know we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's just kind of where this has to be exposed. And I think DEI is highly important, and that's why I was kind of thrilled to be on the committee, to join that. I enjoyed the conversations. I look forward to the next one. And that's, I think, the second father in a row, or parent that's come here in a row, that's talked about racial incidents in this school, and has come back for years. So there's an issue here.
Absolutely.
And where, if we're not fixing it, then we're just causing more. So it has to happen. It should have happened. It, it has to happen now.
So the role is that collaboration and being that voice in, in the meetings? And it seems like it would be a committee that would meet more frequently, right? It's not just about like, oh, this one task, we're coming up with a philosophy. It's an ongoing, regular meeting committee.
We have to have plans, and then see if those plans work, what the long-term effects are. We got to talk to the students, too, because the students are the ones that have the stories of how they're treated, and we have to find out, you know, because I'm a forty-five, forty-six-year-old white guy. I don't, I don't know what the world's like for other people of color, so I have to learn.
I mean, we have the, the coalition, and I would think that, you know, that the committee members should come there. I mean, tonight, we've had two members of the community come and speak with you, and bring up the same issue, equity. How do we know that this is an unbiased lottery system? And the second was, you know, this stuff is still going on here. We've brought that to you. It's been on my goal sheet. We're trying to get it off the ground. You know, maybe we don't even put how much it's going to cost, whatever costs it costs. And we're hearing it from our, our parents.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and we obviously need to look into it further. I think, I think we need to look at it in a, in a broader umbrella, but then that has its, it has its place in that as well. I look at total student engagement, and then I, I want it to be under like a separate. I look at total student engagement, and then I, I want it to be under like a subcommittee for student engagement type thing, because my opinion is if we narrow the focus, then we're going to get whatever narrow viewpoint comes out of that. Whereas I would love to see a very broad-based subcommittee where this would have a place in there.
So what would be the school committee's role in student engagement?
Well, you would think that student engagement would lead to things like test results.
No, no, but my, my point being, our purview is limited to budget, policy, and the superintendent.
So then, policy.
How does policy impact engagement?
I would think policy impacts engagement all the time, right? So you either have good policy that leads to good engagement, or you have policy and procedure that maybe isn't followed, and therefore we don't have good engagement. And I would think that some of the policies might not be, you know, like followed, and maybe that's the reason why we're having this problem. Possibly, don't know.
So then that's a policy subcommittee?
We already have a policy subcommittee?
Right. That's why I'm saying, thank you.
So then you could task the policy subcommittee with looking at various policies that may or may not be able to impact.
Or you can go through the policy manual and see if there's any policies.
Right, I mean, it's right there.
Well, I think, so that could be part of the?
D E I side of things.
I think, from my point of view, as, as your leader, and as the school committee, as your school committee perspective, our parents, our kids, need us to open up to opportunity and access and to make sure that they are not hindered in any way by our policies, our procedures, our protocol, or our faculty, or our staff. And if we don't take a step forward and take a stance, just like Mr. Walker said, we're just sitting here doing the same things over and over again. We have a community that is diverse, we have a community that needs to be inclusive, and we have a community that is, continues to broaden its horizons in different ways and avenues. And what we do matters. What we say matters. And I think coming from you, from the school committee, and taking a stance says to the community, we are willing to go out here and take the stance with you and to move our district forward.
And I, I think that with the, the specific things we have going, the specific projects we have ongoing, like the, the D E I audit that we're, the equity audit we're trying to do, and any, where we are hopeful that some real actionable items will come out of that, I do think that, I hope that there will be enough for a D E I subcommittee to do to make it that. That's the one job of that subcommittee. And that's not to say that your ideas and thoughts on engagement and how the school committee can impact engagement aren't also important or valid. I just think there's enough there to keep the D E I piece separate from that. I think it's a big enough job for one subcommittee. I hope that it ends up being a big enough job for one subcommittee.
Scott, if you care, and I'll be on it.
What I, what I would suggest is that, let's say, for the sake of this discussion, Scott and Ellen, on the newly formed subcommittee, meet with Liz and her team and put together, just as Becky said, wait a minute, what's the scope? What, because I think we desperately need that for every subcommittee. This is a good way to start. What's the scope? What's the responsibility on a go-forward basis? Now, that may morph and change a bit when we get an audit back. Great. But the other thing, I think this came up at the conference as well, too. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. It, it deals with people of color, it deals with different backgrounds, different ethnicity. Nowadays, it's, it's identity, personal identity. Am I a man, am I a woman, am I, you know? There's so many things, it's like exploding. And just as Superintendent LaGose said, I would like to think, I would like to live in a world that no child in any school feels as an outcast. You know, I, I think that should be our goal. And that comes under, that, that's actually leaning more towards the student engagement and et cetera. So I do think, to your point, I think there's enough there, it's an important topic. Let's start with, let's create a, a subcommittee. Leave the subcommittee to work with Liz and her team and come up with a, an outline, a frame, framework. Because, quite frankly, I think after that, we should then look at every other subcommittee and do the same kind of work. I think that would be so helpful, not only for us, but for the people who are going to sit in these seats after us.
I agree. Because you're a subcommittee, like, what am I supposed to do with this?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. So I think the good place to start, certainly an absolutely critical topic. Let's, let's use it, move, move forward, help the rest of our subcommittees, but certainly start to deal with this important work.
What did I tell you earlier about ideas, Gordon?
I can't believe I forgot.
You just did that, you just did it.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm echoing, I'm championing Mr. Walker and Ms. Pennington.
So by January ninth, we'll have, we'll have scopes and charges for all of the subcommittee?
I think one important point, and I don't know how to navigate this one.
Could you read that back to me, Mike? I don't think I said that.
I think one important point, and I don't totally, I don't totally know how to navigate it, maybe the coalition becomes helpful here, but it's of note that we are all white people in a subcommittee. We would not have diversity within it, there's not diversity within our committee. So I don't know how to solve that problem, but it also seems noteworthy that if you're, if we're going to be looking at D E I, like, how, how does that bridge happen somewhere to bring in diversity within that subcommittee somehow? And I don't know the answer, we are obviously, this is who we are.
I think that has to have a combination with the community.
Yes, right, so that's, so it's be looking at that, that's my point, right? That there's got to, there's, and I don't know all the logistics or legalities around that within it, but I think that that would be an important thing to be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, because, and also the committee too, I mean, you look at diversity, equity, inclusion. It's not just race, it's ability.
Yep.
It's so many, it's really so many different things that it's like, I want to hear from the parents, the parents with children of color. I want to hear from the parents with kids that have everything, emotional, any problems at all.
I E Ps, five of fours.
Your group, like, we need to hear from those parents. How are the kids doing? Do they feel like they need to be met? Are they, are they isolated, are they lonely, are they miserable here? Their father saying his son's going to Harvard and doesn't want to come back here? That, that's a bright mind we're, we're not going to see back in this town. That's not good. We need, we need the kids that go here, that go to, go to school here, that go to great colleges to want to come back to the community with their kids. And if they just bail when they get out of here because they don't like East Bridgewater, it's not great.
At the very least, I would think, somebody such as the gentleman that spoke about, you know, his son feeling, not feeling comfortable, at least now you start to map out, aside from current administration, which would be a place to go to if you thought your child had a problem. But now there'd be a specific, you know, chain of command, that's the wrong, wrong phraseology. But now that, okay, I'm going to make sure, if I'm one of those parents, I'm going to make sure, it is a committee somewhere, I'm going to make sure they know about my situation so that I know people are listening to me. And that, to me, I guess, is the first step. Doesn't solve everything, but at least it's a path to say, oh, no, no, we get it, and, you know, we're working on it.
And that might be the first step, is saying who's on the committee and telling parents to let, let us know what they think the issues are, we can bring that to the audit, because that audit has to happen. Because up until we have the audit, any idea that we have, we're just kind of throwing dots in the dark.
Yep.
Because I don't really know, and I have to find out what's. And the reason I asked for the committee, because I, I hear this all the time. We're not sending a deaf ear, we are working on this. We are trying to hire a diverse staff.
I think I asked you that like my third meeting, like two years ago.
I remember, I remember.
Because my assumption was, if, if you're a student of color and you only see white teachers, you're going to think, that's not an area I can go into. You need to see colored, color and faculty and staff. You need to see everywhere that we feel like any job is attainable. And if all you see is white faces, this might not be the thing.
This, this problem, or this issue, is not going to be solved in a day or in a year. This has been a systemic problem for 100 years. But it doesn't need to continue to be a systemic problem in East Bridgewater if we hit it head-on and get involved in this. And I just, you know, I thank you for even.
They even talked it at the conference, they talked about it. They talked about, you know, not having teachers of color, and they're just not going into the field.
Right. Because they've never, because they don't, they're not seeing a representation of themselves 35, you know, 18 years ago. Or they're, they're 13 years in school, they didn't see it. We hope to do a better job at that going forward. I try, we try every year, we, we work with different companies, we do a lot. But I think representing a D E I subcommittee and someone who wants to take the point on it, on the school committee, I think it shows your willingness and your, your acknowledgement that the district needs to do a better job.
So I'd make a motion to create the subcommittee and?
Scott and Ellen.
And I guess, without giving them a vote, we'd vote those two in. But of course, you have a vote. So that, that motion I would make is, let's create the subcommittee.
So Gordon moves to create the D E I subcommittee, second?
Second.
Second by Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think we have Scott and Ellen, who have graciously signed up to serve on that subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll trade you, MSBA, I'll vote for this one.
Thank you, no. I want another committee, so you can have that one if you want.
Next up, we have our policy. Speaking of policy.
J I C F B.
Speaking of policy, and it's in our?
I have that one memorized.
Backup, right? This is it? Yes.
So that, the only things that were added were the things that we already voted on?
Right.
Back in October, and that they were redlined. And so you should have a redlined copy in your, this should be.
Yep, page three of five.
So the only thing that's not on here, which since J S, J I C F B is on as an item, I can actually make the motion to waive the first, the second reading, because we already voted on the verbiage in the October meeting, so technically we just had to update this, is to waive this, waive the two-reading process and just approve this on the first reading. So I would say, I would make a motion, well, make a motion to waive the two-reading process for J I C F B. So we have to vote on that first, and then vote on the J I C F B, because technically, all policies have a two-reading process. A two-reading, we go to the first reading and then the second reading, and then we.
But technically, because we've already approved the same changes that are in this?
Correct.
So Ellen has made a motion to waive the two-reading step process? Peter has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we can make the motion to the policy.
Would you like to?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the policy J I C F B bullying prevention, which is updated with the changes that were in redline from the October meeting. They're also reflected in the student handbook.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have one thing to ask, that the student handbook does not reflect, so it has the policy in there, but it doesn't have J I C F B. So I would ask that file J I C F B, quote unquote, is added to the student handbook, so that way anybody.
People can refer back to it.
Yes.
Is that something we can get done, Liz?
Yeah, matter of fact, we, Mr. Silva, for the, you're talking about the high, all of them, but the high school handbook, he just got access, we, we had.
Okay, yep, I remember.
The old files of the former principal, he was just.
Okay.
That we had to get a little bit of access on him, so we got him. He's looking at it right now, he just, he just formed a subcommittee of his own. He had 14 parents sign up. I don't know where he's, what he's doing, or how they're going to do their circulate and this and that. But he's got, he had 14 parents sign up, six people are coming, and he's asked a couple of teachers to join him, and so. So you'll see that at the end of the year.
Cool.
But I will, I will relay that to him.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when you, you'll see us relay it, meaning?
I'll relay, no.
They're doing to follow the policy, or they're rewriting of something in their handbook?
They're, he's going through the handbook, because he'll probably.
Oh, it's the handbook committee.
His hand, the handbook of the junior high school. And I will tell him to make sure that he puts that in, but it will also look at.
I think there's, there's a couple of other policies that are also referenced in the handbook, so we just need to make sure he's not going to make any changes to any policies that are.
We're not talking about your poli, not talking school committee policy. He's looking at procedural or protocols that he, he and his staff would want.
Okay.
And then if there is a policy change, he would have to go to the school committee. He'd go through me, and then he comes.
Because I went through the, a couple, like, two years ago or something, I went through the policy, the, the student handbook against our policies and made sure that I. Okay. I'll do that again, after they do theirs.
It's his school council, so every building school council reviews the handbook every year and makes recommendations for changes, because it's representative of parents, faculty.
And then, does the school committee approve the handbooks, or are they, okay, I don't remember.
We do.
We, we do. Yeah. Okay. Next up, we have the music department's field trip to Canybee Lake. We have this information in our backup, don't we? Yes, we did, right here. For Great East Music Festival on Friday, June 7th. We have all the information in our backup here.
She'll move, second.
Moved by Gordon, seconded by Scott. The motion is to approve the field trip.
Aye.
All in favor, Ellen is in a, aye.
He did that on purpose.
Next up, we have a donation. She's trying to trip me up, Ellen, I know it. Next up, we have a donation from the Gordon Mitchell School P T A in the amount of $490, $495 to be deposited in the middle school donations account.
That's very nice of them.
It was, for, for document cameras. Moved by?
Ellen.
Ellen, second.
By Scott.
By Scott, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, thank you to the, Gordon.
Yes, thank you to the P T A. I'm losing track of all my paperwork here. Next up, we have payroll warrants. Take a motion to approve the payroll warrants, 21 P S dated 11/21/23, and 23 P S dated 12/6/23.
She'll move.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Peter and Scott abstain.
And I thought you were just letting me make the second.
I take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of November 14th, 2023.
She'll move.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Ellen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not used to this all in favor, I'm so used to doing the roll call.
Oh, yeah.
That's why this is so speedy at the moment.
I thought Gordon was just an A I, I mean, he knows the real person.
Holograph. We have a motion to approve accounts payable warrants, 20 S V dated 11/15/2023, and 22 S V dated 11/29/23.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we will move into executive session, not to return to open session, pursuant to the school committee's executive session minutes of October 24th, 2023, for the purposes to approve the content of the executive session minutes and to determine if the minutes should be available for release. I believe this is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We can do roll call. Pennington, aye.
I need a sec, did I?
Oh, second. You moved it?
I moved it, Ellen second.
Pennington, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Didler, aye.
Didler, aye.
Walker, aye?
Inan, aye.
Foster, aye. And now we move into executive session, pursuant to the school committee's executive session minutes of October 24th, 2023, for the purposes of approving content of the executive session minutes and to determine if the minutes should be available for release and not to return to open session. Liz, one sec. Okay, okay. That's mine, just a little uptick.